We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, I move to accept the minutes of November 10, 2022.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Yes, sir.
Moving on. Mr. Davis, no internal budget revisions?
No, sir, none for your consideration today.
Okay, change in status. We have a change in status received from the Honorable Virginia Sign Circuit Clerk for Joan Miller. She is receiving a 15% salary increase that was not issued in July. Her salary will go from $29,448 to $34,448 effective November 30, 2022. Change in status received from Tamsiah, Community Correction Director for Katie Blunt. She received her certification for Peer Recovery Support Specialist. Her salary will go from $43,135 to $43,635 effective October 1, 2022. Change in status from Jennifer Swisher, 911 Director for the following, effective November 16, 2022. Cynthia Bell is going from Telecommunicator 1 to Telecommunicator 2. Her salary will go from $51,606 to $54,443. Melissa Holtzclaw is receiving a salary increase due to the years of service. Her salary is going from $58,276 to $60,024. Ryan Schumate is receiving a salary increase due to years of service. His salary is going from $52,857 to $54,443. Any questions on change in status? We have approval of minutes. Everyone was present. Mr. Davis, County Minister, was not present, but quick to return, I might say.
Welcome back.
So, any changes or others take votes on these minutes so Mr. Boyd can abstain?
Mr. President, I move to accept the minutes of November 10, 2022 submitted.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. HD, if you would, just say that you would abstain from the vote and not being present.
Not being present.
All right, thank you. All right, county council calendars, we are scheduled to be in the chamber every Thursday of this month, which is four more meetings. Anybody think you said you won't be able to make it on the 29th, is that right?
No, no, I should be here. I just got a doctor's appointment later on that day.
Okay. Everybody else good?
I will not be here next week.
Okay.
I can zoom in, call in.
Okay, all right. So, and then we've got boards, commissions, the, we have nothing the rest of this week, next week, but 6:00 PM planning commission on Monday, Tuesday the 6th, 5:00 PM sewer district, 6:00 PM stormwater Wednesday is 5:00 PM ambience authority, and the eighth is fire board. So, we've got both of those at 6:30. Any changes or corrections to boards and commissions? And you're going to address the boards and commissions later, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we have bond reduction coming in. So, bond reduction, spring mill, section one, phase two, or phase 11, I'm sorry, plat 1, lots 115 to 118, and 137 to 139. BCP file number 016-14 tied to 2102-074 and 2102-139. Bond number 10367373. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. We have a bond reduction for Elizabeth Station, section F, phase 3B, lots 214 through 217, and 238 through 250. BCP number is 050-07 tied to BCP number 2007-095 and 2007-094. LOC number is 100003850-44. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. We have a bond release for Elizabeth Station, section F, phase 2 and 3C. BCP number is 050-07 tied to number 119-05, number 2007-095, and number 2007-094. LOC number is 100003850-45. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. We have a bond release for Elizabeth Station, section F, phase 2A, 2B, and 3A. BCP file number is 050-07 tied to 2007-095 and number 2007-094. LOC number is 1242. Engineering Department has made that recommendation for the bond release. Bond release, another bond release for BTM Office Building, 5462 Williamsport Pike. BCP file number is 055-19 tied to 2008-0057. Grading and number 2112-451. LOC number 6003298. BCP, BCBNB, should be BCP, or is it BNB? Doug, you know?
It was CMB. The bond was actually written on CMB Bank.
That's okay.
Sorry.
All right, CMB Bank, Engineering Department. So, anybody have any questions on the reductions or the releases for Doug? All right, motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved, President.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? If not all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Hess, good morning. You have a little bit of activity for us? Thank you, Doug.
I do. Good morning.
Good morning.
Want to say welcome aboard to the nation of Oregon.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, no internal budget revisions?
No, sir, none for your consideration today.
Okay, change in status. We have a change in status received from the Honorable Virginia Sign, uh, Circuit Clerk for Joan Miller. She is receiving a fifteen percent salary increase that was not issued in July. Her salary will go from twenty-nine thousand four forty-eight to thirty-four thousand four forty-eight effective November, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Change in status received from Tim Zaya, Community Correction Director for Katie Blunt. She received her certification for peer recovery support specialist. Her salary will go from forty-three thousand one thirty-five to forty-three thousand six thirty-five effective Oc- October first, two thousand twenty-two. Change in status for, from Jennifer Swisher, nine-one-one director for the following. Effective, uh, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Cynthia Bell is going from telecommunicator one to tel- telecommunicator two. Her salary will go from fifty-one thousand six oh six to fifty-four thousand four forty-three. Melissa Hol- Holtzclaw is receiving a salary increase due to the years of service. Her salary is going from fifty-eight thousand two seventy-six to sixty thousand zero twenty-four. Ryan Schumate is receiving a salary increase due to years of service. His salary is going from fifty-two thousand eight fifty-seven to fifty-four thousand four forty-three. Any questions on change in status? All right, we have approval minutes. Um, everyone was present. Mr. Davis, County Minister, was not present, uh, but quick to return, I might say.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Um, so any changes or, well, let's take votes on these minutes so Mr. Boyd can abstain.
Mr. President, I move to accept the minutes of November tenth, twenty twenty-two submitted.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. H D, if you would, just say that you would abstain from the vote for not being present.
Not being present.
All right, thank you. All right, county council calendars, we are, uh, scheduled to be in the chamber every Thursday of this month, um, which is four more meetings. Um, anybody think, Kevin, you said you may not, you won't be able to make it on the twenty-ninth, is that right?
No, no, I should be here. I just got a doctor's appointment later on that day.
Okay. Everybody else good?
I will not be here next week.
Okay.
I can zoom in, call in.
Okay, all right. All right, so, um, and then we've got boards, commissions, the, um, let's see here. We have nothing the rest of this week, next week, but six P M., planning commission on Monday, Tuesday, the sixth, five P M., sewer district, six P M., stormwater Wednesday, uh, is five P M., ambulance authority. And the eighth is fire board, so we've got both of those at six-thirty. Uh, any changes or corrections to boards and commissions? All right. And you're going to address the boards and commissions later, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, we have bond reduction, uh, coming in. So bond reduction, spring mill, section one, phase two, or phase eleven, I'm sorry. Plat one, lots one fifteen to one eighteen and one thirty-seven to one thirty-nine. B C P file number zero one six dash one four tied to two one zero two dash zero seven four and two one zero two dash one three nine. Bond number one zero three six seven three seven three. Engineering department has made that recommendation. We have a bond reduction for Elizabeth Station, section F, phase three B, lots two fourteen through two seventeen and two thirty-eight through two fifty. B C P number is zero five zero dash zero seven tied to B C P number two zero zero seven dash zero nine five and two zero zero seven dash zero nine four. L O C number is one zero 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 three eight five zero dash four four. Engineering department has made that recommendation. We have a bond reduction for Elizabeth Station, section F, phase two and three C. B C P number is zero five zero dash zero seven tied to number one one nine dash zero five, number two zero zero seven dash zero nine five. And number two zero zero seven dash zero nine four. L O C number is one zero 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 three eight five zero dash four five. Engineering department has made that recommendation. We have a bond release for Elizabeth Station, section F, phase two A, uh, two B and three A. B C P file number is zero five zero dash zero seven tied to two zero zero seven dash zero nine five and number two zero zero seven dash zero nine four. L O C number is one two four two. Engineering department has made that recommendation for the bond release. Um, bond release, uh, another bond release for B T M, Office Building, uh, fifty-four sixty-two Williamsport Pike. B C P file number is zero five five dash one nine tied to two zero zero eight dash zero zero five seven. Grading and number two one one two dash four five one. L O C number six zero zero three two nine eight. B C P, B C, B N B, should be B C P, or is it B N B? Doug, you know?
It was C and B, the bond was actually written on C and B Bank.
That's, okay.
Sorry.
All right.
That's why I said.
All right, C and B Bank, Engineering Department. Um, so anybody have any questions on the reductions or the releases for Doug? All right, motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So move, Mr. President?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Hess, good morning. You have a little bit of activity for us? Thank you, Doug.
I do, good morning.
Good morning.
Want to say, uh, welcome aboard to the nation of Oregon.
Thank you.
Yeah, we just had six today. Okay, that's a slow week. So for the reasons that's listed there, uh, we had an honorary personal property. They total up to one thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-sixty.
All right, entertain a motion on the six personal property tax exoneration due to officer.
Mr. President, I move to accept the six exoneration due to officer for personal property and amount of one thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-sixty.
Yeah, motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. And you have one application to deconsolidation.
I do, just, uh, we had to split this back out. I think we wanted to sell one of those lots, but for Daniel Tabler had, uh, two parcels in the, uh, Edgbill District. And in that nineteen eighty parcel, fifteen, and we split it back out. We just need your approval on that.
All right, entertain a motion on the application for a deconsolidation.
Motion to approve the, uh, deconsolidation as presented by the assessor.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hess. Congratulations, by the way. Board and me reports. I was getting ready to say Mr. Barnhart, but it's going to be Mr. Boyd, and he doesn't have anything to report on right now.
All right.
Not unless you've got something.
I don't have anything to report.
All right. Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you.
I was looking all the way over for you this morning.
I'm moving around, moving on up. Um, I had a, oh, Public Service Water District meeting. It was short. I thought it was a record, but I was informed that the record was eight minutes.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, and that was separate years ago. Uh, again, no new projects.
Interferes in doing that.
Yeah. So, uh, let me see, they renewed a C D for security deposit and had the executive director report, which was, uh, pretty much standard, uh, I think, uh... The river plan, expansion plans have been submitted to the Health Department for review. And the bunker hill plan is ninety percent, uh, drawings completed. And they should be, the Health Department will review in the next few weeks. And that is about it.
Sure. And that, between those two, there are fifty, fifty, probably about fifty-some million dollars between them. Yep.
Mr. Whitaker?
Um, a meeting I wasn't able to make because we were canvassing the votes was the Airport Authority meeting. But, uh, I was let, uh, I was let know that everything was in good standing out there, so that's the brief one. The one I was able to make was the, um, uh, Eastern Panel Transit Authority, uh, starting off with the profit and loss. They are, uh, fifty-one thousand to the goodness that month. Uh, building fund and statement, um, it's a grant that we get, it's money in, money out, so when it shows it on a profit, P N L statement, it just, it's just a pass-through. Uh, right now, the, uh, budget is at thirty-three percent and we're at, I mean, thirty-three percent is what it should be, but we're at twenty-nine percent of the budget.
The expenditures or revenue?
Uh, year to date, that would be, um...
Expenditures.
Expenditures, yeah.
Let's hope so.
Yeah. Let's hope so, yeah. Uh, old business, sixty percent of the, uh, uh, A and E report, we're, we're at sixty percent of that for the, uh, uh, for the building project. So when it comes to the, uh, the new process or the new, uh, depot. Um, the shortfall for the, um, for the budget that we need to build that, it's an eighty-twenty match. The Department of Highways, D O T, we're, we're going to submit on behalf of the E P T A with Matt Moll and X work to get our project to the, to the right people to make sure that, uh, there's money out there that's coming from, uh, the feds. But hopefully we'll be able to make up that shortfall in the, uh, in that twenty percent match.
Do you know how, about how much they have already on the, of the twenty percent match?
Uh, we're talking that they need at least eight million, so, so out of that, I can't remember, didn't make that number down. Uh, they have A D A training coming up for post-COVID environment to, um, enlighten the drivers on new codes that, uh, that are becoming forward. Um, they'll have a new safety plan here on the new business of post-COVID. They are replacement of the minivans, uh, are going to be replaced with demand response. Uh, they'll be ready to be picked up in Charleston. And they are going to, uh, for the first, uh, time, I think, the twelve passenger vans, they have to do a factory visit because of the, um, the, um, grant money that's gone to those. They want to make sure that all the items that are listed in the grant money are going to be on the vehicles when they pick them up, that any discrepancies there. And have, um, grant money going to something that wasn't there or getting something that the grant money didn't cover. Uh, and then, uh, they do have a, um, they have contract back to Harpers Ferry. And it's going to be doing, instead of going out for contract where that one company came in and, and, uh, underbid, I guess, the Eastern Panel Transit Authority. Uh, it was, um, told that they're going to do a memorandum of understanding now through the, uh, through the Parks Service to make that, uh, continuation for the P T A. Which is, uh, we thought was a pretty good thing. Uh, let's see. The, um... Just, yeah, the commuter bus is, um, pretty old and close to being picked up at the Silver Line down at the, um, Metro Station down near Ashburn. So we're getting close to having that ready. And the last thing was, um, it's actually, believe it or not, it's a, um, there'd be QR codes on the buses that somebody can, um, snap with their phone, um, has to do with human trafficking. So if they see something, to report something and, um, and, and training for the drivers to recognize when it is or when it could be a problem.
Good.
And that's all that I have.
Transit Authority has came a long ways over the years.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, uh, just quite a bit going on everywhere now.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
Yeah, it, it was a struggle for several years and it actually has done a very nice job and turned around and it's something to be proud of.
Yeah, it used to be flying by the seat of your pants.
It was, it was, yeah.
But, uh, Elaine is, uh, is doing a real good job. And actually, her husband Craig is now at the airport as Board of Business Director.
He is, yeah.
Two good people to have in, uh, in their positions.
Councilperson Duncan here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wine and Tracy and I met with the auditor last week who had concerns about our P car, uh, activity.
Apologize, I did not get to call in for that, I, I wanted to, I'm sorry.
It was, it was fun, it was, it was a good discussion. I, I think we have a path forward, you know, that everybody can be satisfied, so. Also have planning commission meeting Monday night, which, along with Mr. Barnhart, was relatively short.
Quiet.
Yes, sir.
It was, uh, what the Fed did on it's, uh, it's not touching the brakes, it's applying the brakes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, everybody's kind of... But there are some things, I think, in the queue, uh, in the office, and there's some projects, you know, that are trying to get legs to come forward. Uh, also, uh, I met with the building commission, uh, this week where, uh, Mr. Bentley, um, and, and Mr. Roach and Sharon Brown have, uh, that business for, for that. And, uh, Mr. Wine and myself and, uh, Nick Deal and Dave met with, uh, yesterday morning, I'm sorry, it wasn't yesterday morning, Tuesday morning, to discuss the broadband for, uh, Western Back Creek Valley area. We went over the, um, contracts that, or the offers that were made, the bids. So, uh, we still have a little bit more work to do on that to drill down a little bit tighter. Uh, we may, may ask them to come in, uh, individuals, three different vendors, to discuss some additional things, so.
Okay.
That's all right.
Good. All right, now I don't have anything to report on at this time.
Mr. President, if I may, um, as the council is aware, during the first meeting, uh, in twenty twenty-three, as part of your administrative work, you'll be doing, um, uh, board and commission assignments. Uh, and prior to that time, I'll, we'll put together the spreadsheet that, that indicates the board and commissions that you have now and discuss which ones you may want to change. But until that time, um, we need some direction on, um, how do you wish to, uh, move forward, at least through the month of December, on the board and commissions that have been assigned to Councilperson Deliae? Um, now, as you know, Councilperson Deliae had the Farmland Protection Board, Senior Services, Roundhouse Authority, Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Library, and, uh, served on the M P O with, uh, Councilperson Barnhart. So do you, how do you, you know, and I, I can't imagine that these boards will be too active during the, the holidays, but, um, we probably should have a liaison at least assigned to them.
And, and my recommendation to Councilperson Boyd was just to, for him to have for the month of December, just to take over Dan's boards. And then this council will actually redo all the boards and commissions, the first being in January, if that's okay, everybody?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
And then, you know, we talked about the Roundhouse, now you can either, I, I guess his question, just, just talk briefly about that. Well, you want to talk about it now or you want to talk about it later, January?
Would you talk about it, either or? I'm not going to be present for the meeting next week, but, uh, or the week after next. But, um... It, my, my question was, should I step down as the chairman there and just be a liaison and a member of the board? Uh, which I think would probably be the smart thing to do, but that was something we need to come to a decision on.
Go ahead, Andy.
Are you currently appointed by the city or by the county? Who looks into that?
So you'll, you'll have a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll just communicate straight with H D?
Because in this next meeting, they're doing, they're voting for positions at the Roundhouse.
So the time would be of essence on that decision? Okay? All right, thank you. All right, hand that over to H D. All right, we have a, we have, uh, any, uh, board and commission, uh, activity on any vacancies or interviews?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. President, I'd like to have, uh, Mr. Ronald Truitt, uh, rescheduled for an interview, please, for the planning commission.
All right. All right, Penny, you want to take care of that one? And then, um, we have an applicant for the Library Board, which is Dr. Joseph Di Soto. And then we also have the reappointment packet for John Bushman, uh, for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, anybody want to do a motion on, uh, uh, Dr. Bushman for the Board of Zoning Appeals for the Tuscaloosa District?
Sure will. I move to reappoint Dr. John Bushman, uh, for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Doesn't give a, uh, expir- expiration term.
The three-year appointment? You have, uh, Tracy? How long is the term?
Two years.
Two years?
Okay.
Okay. All right, have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. And the application for Dr. Joseph Di Soto, uh, you all want to hold that off until you all give up, uh, W up boards in January? Or you want to go ahead and have them come in? What do you want to do?
I say just bring him in. Go ahead and bring him in.
All right, can you line that up, two Penny, please?
At least the reviews of the planning of the library, what you do to, to preform.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. All right.
Sure.
All right. Jumbo?
Yes, sir.
Any other activity on boards and commissions? Looks like you're doing honorary councilperson there.
Well, that's wonderful. Today, we have Colin Bash. Would you like to come up here and tell us a little bit about yourself and we'll swear you in as honorary councilperson? And what school you coming from?
Central.
Central. This is, this is your audience, not me. So what are your, what are your plans in the, uh, Hector High School or going up through to high school?
Marine Biology.
Marine Biology. Scuba? Snorkel? No. You do snorkel, it's a lot of fun, isn't it? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Joseph? That's Colin Bash.
Colin.
Okay, glasses.
Yes, sir.
Do you swear and affirm?
I swear and affirm.
That I will uphold the Constitution?
That I will uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia?
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard to fulfill?
That I will work hard to fulfill.
Responsibilities of office?
That I will work hard to fulfill.
Fulfill the responsibilities of the office? Of honorary councilmember? To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Colin, if you have any time, you want to, uh, ask a question or, or speak out, just let us know and you're free to do that, okay? Or if you want, you can come over here and sit in my chair.
We'd be glad to kick him out.
All right. Jennifer's not here yet, so let's...
Will's here. Huh? Will's here.
Yeah, I know. I, I, I was just trying to look over Will for a couple minutes, all right?
Fair point.
All right, let's go. All right, Will, tertiary supervisor of state accounts for the month of December.
Will, about the Wills.
The Will's about the Wills, yeah. It's, uh, it's always a joy to see Will in all of this, huh?
There's a Will, there's a Wes.
Good morning, counsel. Uh, uh, counsel, this morning, I'm here, uh, appearing to ask for your consideration for thirty-seven estate closings for the month of December, twenty twenty-two. Uh, all estates herein named for your consideration are identical to those found in your read-ahead. Furthermore, all estates named herein, uh, were published in the journal newspaper, November seventh, twenty twenty-two, or earlier, uh, in satisfaction with West Virginia law. Lastly, all estates proposed for settlement here today have been adequately legally noticed or actually noticed to, uh, all interested parties unto these individual estates. Uh, and with that, barring any individual's presence here today, uh, with an objection, I ask for this council's consideration to accept the thirty-seven estate settlements as named in your read-ahead.
Okay, there's no questions for Will on that. We'll, uh, entertain a motion for the thirty-seven estate accounts for the month of December.
Mr. President, I move to accept the thirty-seven estate settlement list as presented for approval.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Boy, that's the fastest we've gotten rid of Will.
Well, not so good.
Counsel, I do have a hearing, uh, request, uh, for, uh, scheduling. Uh, the estate of early Lee Hartman has a petition or seeking to probate a copy of a purported last will and testament of the decedent in solemn form. At this time, the matter doesn't, uh, does seem uncontested.
We have a date for that?
Thursday, January fifth. Will, we have it scheduled at ten forty-five. Now I'll get out of here. Thank you, Jennifer.
Get out of here. We'll see you, Will. Jennifer, looks like you got everybody. While you come on forward, right now, we have Jennifer Swisher, Emergency Communication Director, Accredited Center of Excellence for Emergency Dispatching Award Recognition. And this is big, Jennifer.
Yeah.
It's huge.
It's, it's very, it's, it is great.
Tell us, tell everyone about this.
So, um, back in April of last year, we decided, we had decided beforehand, but we decided we wanted to go forward to be an accredited center. And an accredited center means basically, we're the best of the best.
Just how good are you?
We are the best.
Okay.
The best, not just in Berkeley County, but we think we're the best everywhere.
You're one of twelve in the nation, right?
Uh, one, uh, in the world.
In the world.
So we're, we're number twenty-two, um, in the world. Only twelve of us are current.
Okay.
So it's, it's a big deal. There's thirty-six other, um, thirty-six hundred agencies in the world that uses protocol. And we are one of currently twelve that are currently triates, which means we're accredited in medical, police, and fire dispatch. in medical, police, and fire dispatch. So it is, it's an amazing feat, that I'd say, after that. We started last April, is when we went full force into this journey, and it's been a journey. It's a lot of hard work by a lot of people. Basically, we had to go through and make sure that we're using the protocols the correct way, and that we're doing it the same way for all of our callers, regardless of it being emergency, non-emergency calls or help, that we're doing it the same way. And we wanted to make sure that we are, that we're the shining stars, that we think we are, for Berkeley County and the citizens and the visitors that come to our county. It's, it's a long process. It's not just, you know, filling out a piece of paper. There's twenty points that you have to go through for each of the accreditation processes for each of the disciplines. The books are about that big, each of the paperwork that we have, that we completed. It's.
So it took a huge commitment from each one of your?
Each one of the staff.
Employees and staff members to say, we want to do this.
Yes, and it, it took their buy-in, it took in the buy-in of the council, county administrator, and other senior staff. It, again, by note means a, an easy task, some people don't pass it. So we passed it on the first round. It's a six, six to eight week evaluation process. We were the first in the world out of all the agencies that were done by an international evaluation committee or group. Our medical was evaluated by someone from Austria, our fire from the U.K., and our law enforcement was somebody from Canada. So it was, it was definitely an international flair that we kind of brought to Berkeley County. They did an onsite visit with us towards the end of that process, and they were able to come in and check all of our paperwork, those books, and our computers, and make sure that we were doing it right. That evaluator actually sat with one of the dispatchers for about an hour, and then they went into our quality assurance office team, and they showed them that, yes, we are framing and evaluating their calls correctly, and that we're doing everything right. This isn't a, you're done and you're over, we have to continue to keep this up. So every.
Is this an annual thing, or?
Every quarter, we have to submit reports.
Okay.
If we're not at the level that we need to be, they can close and, they can pull it from us. We don't want that, my staff doesn't want that, they work too hard for this, and it's, it's very exciting. I wanted, you know, just to, again, recognize my whole staff, honestly, it, it really took a lot of their work. They didn't start off using the protocols too much when I came in, now they're using it on all the calls and doing it the right way. So anyone that comes through our county should feel like they're getting the best care possible from the nine-one-one call takers. I couldn't thank my team more, you know, it's, it's not just, it wasn't just me, they had to have the buy-in, we have the quality assurance team, we have our whole administrative team, we've had other senior county staff that has helped us to accomplish this. And honestly, I couldn't be more prouder of them professionally, I didn't think this would ever happen, I came to Berkeley County and you guys gave me the leverage to do that, so that is exciting for me, this is beyond exciting. I don't, I don't even know any other good words, exciting, amazing, but they're doing a great job, and I'm so proud of them.
A great, a great accomplishment.
Yes.
Sounds like a TV show to me.
We, we were given, we'll have four plaques, but we were given this one of the brothers today. I'd like to present it to my staff and to the county?
Absolutely.
To be able to know how proud we are of them. The other four plaques will be here within the next week or so, we'll proudly display them in the center, that's where they should be, for everyone to see that walks in the door. So this one is our, our triates, and it is.
Here, wow, look at that. Let me come around and call it for you. And then you can read it out, if you want.
Be careful of the top there. So this is for our.
I'll help you.
This is for our triacreditation. The International Academy of Emergency Dispatch officially recognizes the Berkeley County Emergency Communications Center as a triaccredited Center of Excellence, for demonstrating extraordinary compliance to the highest level of standards in medical, fire, police dispatch. Triacreditation is granted as of the seventeenth day of November twenty-twenty-two, and is valid as long as medical, fire, police, current accreditations are maintained, and that's signed by the various members of the International Academy of Emergency Dispatch. So we're so happy that this is somebody who brings it to Berkeley County.
Okay, show it to the folks, yeah.
Then again, thanks to my, my staff, if I could have, can I bring them all up here?
Absolutely. And after that, Jen, we'll take a break and we'll take photos, okay?
Okay, that's fine, yeah, we can, all my staff.
All, all your staff that's here today, there is some people still at the center, right?
Yeah, we have, we have people working in the center, they would have loved to have been here today, of course, but, you know, unfortunately, the jobs still have to go on, so, but I'm very lucky, again, this is some of my staff members, for, for all of our work, they really, they really did a lot of. I wouldn't be on that. They're all scooping over to the corners. Not over here. But thank you, guys, for.
Come this way.
Absolutely. Jim, I just asked your name.
How you doing?
I'm good, Jim, how are you?
I'm used to getting knocked around.
I've known Jim since I was nineteen, he was like my first landlord.
Yeah.
But this is just part of the Berkeley County Emergency Communications Team. There are more or less a little worker overnight, and some of them are working today, attacking everybody, and, you know, especially thanks to our allied agencies, too, because they were there to support us on committees and, and be part of this, so we're very thankful for them as well, for their participation. So thanks to the county.
The best of the best.
Yep.
Well, I've seen some public safety people in the audience, anybody want to speak out and say how much this means to y'all?
Get back to work.
Some of us just got off. Oh, that'd be me.
All right, any, any employees want to say anything at this time?
Every now and then, I will, just, just, not the employees, but I'll say this, that I have, I have the scanner app on my phone, and I get to listen. It's pretty neat.
Mm-hmm.
Lot of calm voices.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, we, each and every one of us depend upon y'all, and, and the whole one hundred and thirty-something thousand people in Berkeley County now. So your, your job is, is a tough job, we understand that, and, and for y'all to be one of the top twelve in the world, that's just, words don't say enough. So thanks to each and every one of you. And women, I, I have to say this, it looks like y'all got some competition with men now? That's for, this is the largest group of men I've seen in this, in this group?
Both of us, wow, we have some men in the group.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I know.
But thanks again for everything y'all have done. Anybody else?
I just, I was like, you know, I, I still have my old pager that nobody wants, because it's junk, and they, you're like, I'm, I'm going to keep it, so, so I listen almost every day what's going on, and you guys just don't shut up. You are busy, and this, this county is busy, and, you know, I know there are low priority calls that are, are easy to take and, and handle, just a walk in the park, but I also know there's, there's high stress calls, that whether it's a, an incident like this past Saturday?
I saw that.
Or there's a shooting involved, you know, with multiple agencies that you all handle, you know, whether it's, you know, a structural fire, something on the interstate, which is, you know, daily, not just one call anymore. I know several times this week, there were, there were more than one call at a time on the interstate. So I, I know how busy you are, and I thank you for what you do, and just keep doing it, and obviously, what you're doing, you're very good at what you do, so thank you.
I'm glad to know that Eddie is satisfied, I've never, never called nine-one-one, but at least I know that they're ready for me when I do.
I heard Linda's been close a couple of times.
There was a call for Linda.
No, I mean, like, you better get down here before something happens to jump.
She gonna call nine-one-one for that.
She's gonna probably call Brown's.
She gonna call an excavating company, I see. Yeah, it's great. Okay, so we're going to take a break and take pictures, everyone, and Jennifer, where did you go? Try to make sure, and we'll mention it today, ladies, don't let us forget it on the legislative summit today, and make sure our legislators understand, and, and maybe if y'all's up to, maybe it could be, y'all could be recognized at the Capitol. All right?
Is there any other West Virginia nine-one-ones involved in this?
No, we're the only, the only triacredited center in the state, and there have been one other agency that was accredited in one of the disciplines, but they aren't no longer, so we're only on right now. So it's definitely a West Virginia drought, not in a Berkeley County drought.
Well, the other thing, too, Jennifer herself, and Mr. Davis, and Mr. Gokener were down in Dunbar not too long ago, and they were telling us about their new center, and they were excited and stuff, and I said, hmm, glad they're not up our way. You know, it's great for them to have what they have, but they don't want to see ours, because it's super nice, and now sta, and the staff is great. We knew back, that was probably almost ten years, eight, ten years ago, that people don't understand, the county grew, had, had grown so much, but yet the, the console area and, and that is now their kitchen, ladies, if y'all don't know, and, and the kitchen's bigger than what the, what the, what the call center was, right? So we knew as a county council that we needed to give these dispatchers the room that they need to not only take the calls, but also do the administrative stuff, but also to decompress. You know, when you're in a tight situation, as Councilperson Gokener said, you may need to take ten, twenty, thirty minutes and say, I need a break, right? If time allows you, and we made sure that happened, too. So it's, it's all coming together, isn't it, Mary?
Yes, it is, sir.
Huh?
I've seen a lot of changes.
Yeah, yes, yes, we're, we're seasoned employees, aren't we? All right, let's take a break and take photos.
All right, we're back in session. Next to our agenda is Allen Davis County Administrator Legislative Priorities.
As the council is aware, this afternoon you will be meeting with some of our state representatives to discuss potential legislative issues for the 2023 session. As I typically do every year, I've put together some suggested topics for you to consider, and Matt has given us a couple, which I've added to the list that he can explain in a little bit. Just starting at the top, some of these are due to bits of what we've done in years past. The first has to do with legal notices. As you know, as the code stands now, we have to do all of our legal notices, including our levy document. We have to publish it in the newspaper. It cannot be done electronically or via website. So we are requesting that the code be revised to recognize the use of electronic advertising. The state did amend code last year to allow some of their publications to be done electronically, but they did not include the county's municipality.
And some of these, as we go through them, I'm just gonna look to them and ask them, you know, how's the study going? What's it look like in the future for the counties to be able to piggyback what you're doing? And let them take the floor.
The regional jail.
See what they have to report on.
Yes, sir. And of course, you'll lead the conversation this afternoon. The regional jail per diem. This has been an issue of concern by all the counties for a number of years. Last year, House Bill 4497 was introduced that put a temporary freeze on the statutory per diem hack of 4825. That's due to expire on June 30th, 2023. We did receive correspondence dated October 7th, 2022 from the West Virginia Department of Homeland Security notifying us that the current per diem of 4825, in the absence of any action by the legislation, will increase to 5448 beginning July 1st, 2023. As you know, there's been discussions on various incentives that the state would like to introduce, that counties would have some certain benchmarks that the counties would have to do in order to see a reduction in the regional jail bill to include home confinement and day reports in our recovery resources. All the things that we currently have in place. In fact, at one time, there was some discussion using Berkeley County as the benchmark for everyone else. If you do all of these things, then you'd be eligible for reduction in your regional jail bill. So in the absence of any action by the legislation in the 2023 session, effective July 1st, 2023, our daily per diem rate will increase to 5448.
Is there any movement on municipalities paying their fair share and the state paying their share on moving inmates to the state facilities?
They were looking about doing that because, I mean, most of the people, and Matt, you may know more about this than I do, but I think that the, I mean, everybody there is on a state charge, right? So, but yet the county pays the bill.
Generally.
Okay? So that's what Mr. Davis was talking about, I think, Mr. Barnhart was. It almost, we've heard from some of the senators and some of the house members that they were wanting to sit down and say, if you meet these, this criteria, the state would be willing to jump in and do X, Y, and Z and try to reduce that bill. It's kind of like, it's the way I look at it, it's kind of like all these department stores. If you have a bonus card, you get a reduction, but if you're too lazy to use it, which I am most of the time, then you don't get it, right? But so, but, so what I'm saying is, some counties may choose to say, well, the state's paying, it's a great idea for the state. Some counties may say, well, they're paying for the bill, we don't care how long they spend it. Well, they don't want that. They want incentivized you to do well so that they can, they can do the things that they're doing, just like we are. I mean, there's no reason at all that our regional jail bill shouldn't be six to seven million dollars. We're holding it under three million. And that's what they're looking for. So I think if they, if nothing else, let's use Berkeley County as a pilot, you know?
It benefits everybody.
Right.
For the city, I mean, us, the state, the jail, you know, everybody gets benefits by keeping these people out of the jail.
And what happened over the years in the past was that we were putting people in jail that needed help and needed assistance and may need a portion of healing, right? But not, you know, the ones that are a threat are still going to jail. They'll continue to go to jail. But it was crazy for us to be putting people in jail to further, to get further educated in their own direction. You know, you hang with the wrong people, you become those people. You hang with the right people, you become those people. So I think, I think we can make some, hopefully we can make some headway on this. We're not the only county in the state of West Virginia that's doing good things in reduction of jail bills. We, and I didn't mean that we could be the only county in the state of West Virginia to be a pilot. There's quite a few of them out there doing a lot of work. And so hopefully, you know, the other thing that we always said on this is, you know, back in 2016, Mr. Davis, as you recall, we said we, you know, we didn't need to take money and have it as bridge money. We knew that we was gonna spend money and not save money for a while, right? Because it'd take a while for the program to get up and running. And HD, if I can, HD, the Day Report Center in 2016 had less than a handful of people in it, right? Community Service had six people in it. They didn't know where two of them were, and they were in the regional jail, right? So I'm proud to say now that our Day Report Center has probably over 300 participants in it, right? And Tim Zai runs a very tight ship. We have the Recovery Resource Center, which means that you don't have to be a criminal if you're tired of being on the drugs, right? And you just want help. And then, and then our community service is everywhere. They're cleaning up, how many miles, Matt? I see you've done a report.
Hundreds and hundreds of miles.
It's crazy.
Yeah, cleaning up parks, putting that.
They helped the Roundhouse.
Yeah, so we had someone down at the Roundhouse for a while, and we had somebody there on a regular basis to oversee them.
Yeah.
We were using those guys down there and, yeah.
They keep our buildings, some of our buildings up and help out.
Yeah, parks and recs.
Does that start to bring in revenue to the people with the Day Report? Are they paying to be there? Is that paying for the?
That's home confinement. The home confinement pays.
They're paying for the employees that are there that covers some of the costs.
I can tell you that we're, we're not in the red on that one. Okay? We were, but not anymore. Next year should be in the black.
We actually started billing, we put our first bill into Medicaid a week or so ago, thirty, twenty thousand dollars. But we want to get it out there, see how long it will take to process. So that revenue stream is now, is now starting.
Yeah, so that's how we, we were able, just to, just imagine, one year savings in a regional jail bill from three million to six million. Pays for the remodel we done two years ago. Unfortunately, they're doing such a good job, and our judicial branch sees that not only are they saving money, but they're changing lives. Not just the person that's participating, but their whole family. So we're about ready to do a $10 million addition to that building. It's in the design process right now. So a lot of good things there. It's, 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 I mean, even on the surface, it should be in the black this year. But behind the scenes, it's saving probably, monetarily, it's probably saving three to four million dollars, you could imagine. So we'll talk about the good things that we're doing here in other counties and try to get them to, if nothing else, to start doing a pilot program. But what I was getting at about the bridge money, I forgot, I lost my train of thought, was some of these smaller counties are really suffering economically. The state needs to give them bridge money to get these programs up and running. You know, one of the things we've done also at HD was, we have a grants department now. There's three ladies down the hall from your office. I'm not afraid to say I might be off a couple million, but probably last year with all, I call it the Fed's fake money, thirty million dollars, you know? And it's just unbelievable. And a lot of that grant money is going towards recovery, you know, other than the rescue money and stuff. All right, Mr. Davis?
The next is just dealing with some of our infrastructure funding needs in Berkeley County. As you know, the good news is we're the fastest growing county in the state. The bad news is we're the fastest growing county in the state. And as the economic engine for West Virginia, we're just requesting that the state give consideration in using, they received $4 billion from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. That money needs to be committed by the end of 2024. There's also about $1.2 trillion of federal money available over the next five years for infrastructure needs. All we're doing is asking that the state keep us in mind for essential infrastructure projects to include, but not be limited to roads and highways. We know, you know, Route 9 between Martinsburg and Berkeley Springs is in major need of upgrade, as well as some other areas that we've identified over the years. We have water, sewer, stormwater management, broadband and fiber optic needs that we've discussed, that we've identified, that we would really like to see some of the state funding be allocated to us for these projects.
All right, and so we all know that we need a lot of infrastructure here in the county if we're still gonna continue to be the economic engine for the state of West Property tax rollback, Anthony, that was done in Norwood, but always sells, and I can't remember, it was 1980 something.
It's in the eighties.
In the eighties. And this one, this one will blow your mind, Councilperson Boyd, is the property tax rollback was done in the 1980s when he actually started assessing the properties for the first time in a long time, or maybe the first time ever, but, and what was happening, it was jumping 20 to 30% every time they did it. Now you're assessing properties every year.
Every three years.
Well, every three years in rotation, but you're doing it every year. And, and so what happens is, is puts a cap, a 3% cap. So any property that's on the books, even though we know our properties are going up 17% a year right now, you're only getting, as a county council and the school boards are only getting 3%, which the assessor gets 2% of that for the evaluation fund. So you get 1% a year, even though the property values are going up 17%. So you're forced to roll the property tax back, not only for the county and the, and the school board, but also the city of Martinsburg. And it's kind of hard to fight inflation when you're locked at 1% a year, right? So.
Always had it beat once.
Yeah, yeah.
But it failed.
And we've requested, you know, we would prefer that it be eliminated altogether. But if nothing else, maybe if they could at least increase the rollback to 10%, instead of 3% in the interim. And this has been a legislative priority of ours for a number of years, and it has been shared by the County Commissioners Association, as well as West Virginia Association of Counties, so.
So the crazy thing is, no floor. So just imagine you lost 70% of your property values in the last recession, and your taxes went down, but at the same time, when they, when the, when the values go up, they can't. I mean, your values go up, but then you're forced to have a rollback on your levy rate to keep it within that 1%. So really, the county is, budget is growing on tax revenue because of the growth. So it's a bad deal for, for any county that's grown. Sales tax, we all know what that's about. 1% sales tax to the county, just like they did some of the municipalities in the state of West Virginia. Our thing is, is we're allowing people to come up and down 81, probably by now, 90,000 vehicles a day. And that's burdening our public safety on fire, police, and EMS, and we get nothing, right? We don't even get a penny for every dollar they spend to stop at a convenience store to get a burger or something. And it's just absolutely insane to put all that burden on the residents of Berkeley County and the state of West Virginia. So, you know, again, these, we just have to try to present them differently, put a new twist to them where it makes sense to, and we've all discussed that, you know, if we get the 1 cent sales tax, we can, we can eliminate some of the, some of the burden on the locals. And as Councilperson Gokener said, give back the coal severage to the counties that produce. Any questions on that one? I'm sorry, Mr. Davis.
No, sir. You know, and it's, it's hard for us as a, as a high-growth county to fund the needs of our constituency when we don't have the revenue source. You know, we know we need more deputies, we know we need more paid firefighters.
We need more deputies, so HD understands, we need more deputies because we don't have the state police that we're supposed to have.
Right. And that's addressed a little bit later on.
Right. Rails with trails? Matt, this is, this is yours?
Current code allows us to do rails to trails.
Wait a second, we have the railroad guy here, too, so this is a very important conversation.
I think we have.
Rails with trails, Doug, we've talked about this.
Rails with trails, right?
Go ahead.
Currently, under state law, do rails to trails, but West Virginia is one of only three states that does not have rails with trails, which is a different structure.
And just so, just so Doug understands that one of the things that this would do would be to take the liability away from the railroad company.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. It addresses a liability issue that's not been addressed in law, that lawmakers also wanted to address with rails to trails, so it addresses that as well.
So it actually would benefit the railroads to do this because now, currently, if someone, something happened, the liability could fall on the railroad company, where if you turn back around and get rails with trails, now the liability is with the individual that may have got hurt.
It adds railroad companies to the list of regarding liability.
Kind of like, kind of like splunking in caves, right?
Senator Maynard in Southern West Virginia attempted to put the liability in the existing law two years ago, and his attempt to do that did not get done, get through the process. But this, that, his bill is incorporated into the proposal that we introduced last year, which was one word amendment from being passed on the last day.
So this, this, I'm gonna use this phrase, and maybe I shouldn't, this should be some low-lying fruit.
Should be a low, yeah, should be something we can get through the process. There's, I've reached out to the Tourism Commissioner and people in Charleston and Senator Trump as well. We've talked to him about it, and, you know, there's been a lot of support, interest in it down in Southern West Virginia, where there's railroad there that could have a trail alongside of a very lightly-used, you know, railroad, very slow-moving. It's not envisioned, the analysis statewide, the national reports on rails with trails all show that the really fast-moving trains usually don't, this is not something that they put trails along CSX, Norfolk Southern tracks usually, Class 1 railroads.
More of the freight train.
More of the, you know, the spurs and.
The short, short lines.
Short lines, yeah, short lines. It's common, but it's a real opportunity, in my opinion, to really improve, go to the quality of life issue.
One of the reasons why this is somewhat makes a big, it really helps Berkeley County out is because we're really focusing on quality of life. So currently Frog Hollow, which you're familiar with that, is being converted over to a trail. So just imagine now you have the trail that's gonna start at the Roundhouse to get that attention it needs. Downtown Martinsburg, now, you know, now you're all of a sudden being able to go around, and I know I've got some time to kill, so going around to visit the shops for maybe dinner or lunch. My wife and I, when we ride, which we haven't rode much at all this year, like to eat lunch so we can maybe burn it off on the way ride back, but it, and then it will go all the way to Rantin. You know, we're doing our, we're doing, we're gonna go from Frog Hollow to the regional jail, the county. The city's gone from, from Bill Towers Restaurant to the Roundhouse. And then we have that property in Sportsman's Paradise. We've already talked to the CNO Canal Director, right?
Correct, yes. We did have a good meeting with them and.
And expressed that they would love for us to tie.
It was a very positive response.
And with the CNO Canal. So, you know, we're trying to do, we're trying to improve the quality of life of Berkeley County because it seems like anybody, any business coming into the county, the one thing they're looking for, or I should say, two things that means the most to them, is quality of life and education. And that's the two things, and actually the railroad. So we're, we're trying to do our part to make Berkeley County a better place, and we just truly believe that we don't never settle for what it is, and we always want to make improvements. And this is one of the things that, Matt, I know you worked and dedicated some time to last year.
Well, I got a LGAAC meeting of the local government advisory committee to the Chesapeake Bay meeting this afternoon, and I was going to discuss that about our quality of life program.
Sure.
How we added 70 acres there at the poor farm, Sportsman's Paradise, the walking trail there at Spring Mills, and the new park at Bunker Hill.
Right.
Because those are environmental projects and important to quality of life and how we're integrating the pilot program into.
Into the quality of life, yeah. And the good thing about that is the quality of life projects that we're doing, the school, the school board members and all the pupils, the staff get to enjoy every bit of it, you know? So, all right, Mr. Davis, this is, anybody have anything to say about that one? Next one, this is emergency medical services retirement system, Mr. Davis?
This is just clean up as follow-up to last year's session. As the council's aware, last year, we requested that the code be changed to allow our 22 full-time career firefighters to transfer, and any new firefighters to join the West Virginia Emergency Medical Services Retirement System. This not only is a recruitment, but it's a retention tool, and more in line with, with the duties that these folks do. That was, that was passed into law. They also, as part of House Bill 4688, allow our full-time emergency communication dispatchers to participate in the West Virginia Emergency Medical Services Retirement System, but only those dispatchers that were hired after July 1st of 2022, which means that any of our dispatchers that were hired prior to that are not eligible to join. And all we're requesting is that, that it be amended to reflect what we actually, what they did for firefighters, that all of our emergency dispatchers, regardless of how they can join. That should be, you know, fairly, fairly easy to correct.
Again, some pretty, just like you said, housekeeping.
Yes, sir.
West Virginia, anybody have a question for Mr. Davis on that? Does anybody have, if you have any others that you want to add, we'll add them, or anything that you think we need to take away, we take away. All right, so the next one, Mr. Davis?
Again, this is a repeat of last year. All we're requesting is that West Virginia code be amended, that to allow the county commissions and county councils to retain the county clerk collected portion of the heritage fees to be deposited in a special revenue wildlife conservation and recreation land fund. Berkeley County, over the years, has remitted thousands of dollars to the West Virginia Outdoor Heritage Conservation Fund, which began in 1985, and we've never received a penny of that. All we want is our fair share.
Right. About one dime since 1985, and I'm sure we've contributed a lot of money.
Where's the money gone? Where's the money gone?
Well, it's obviously going into the state treasury, and then from there, a big chunk of the funds goes to the Division of Natural Resources, DNR. The Division of Natural Resources is a big chunk of the funds, the board.
So it's going to public land?
Right, generally. A big chunk of it is, yes.
So the county may not see the money, but maybe places like Sleepy Creek and, we know, we know our roadside park weren't getting much money because we've taken over to one at Bunker Hill.
A chunk of the funds definitely goes into the DNR, you know, budget, into their, into what they do with public wildlife management areas and state forests and such. But then there's also this board, this heritage board, that, you know, identifies projects throughout the state. Jefferson County has recently, within the last, I believe, I know they were on the agenda, awarded or identified as receiving funds for a project in Jefferson County for recreation, a public, a park project. I think it was along the Shenandoah River. I don't have it fresh in my mind.
So basically, something like this could be used for the park at Spring, or Sports.
Could be, could be.
Sounds like we need representation on the board.
Yes, I would, that's what I view.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Any question for Matt or Allen on this one? All right, Mr. Davis?
As the council's aware, traditionally, until several years ago, the property transfer tax was divided and distributed by thirds. A third came to the county, a third went to farmland preservation, and a third went to the state. Several years ago, legislation was. Several years ago, legislation was passed so that the state of West Virginia's portion of the property transfer tax would be returned to us and phased in over a 10-year period, 10% the first year, 20% the second year, so on. All we're requesting is that legislation be introduced to speed up that conversion. And I know that that's something that, that has been worked on, but it hasn't happened yet. We just want to keep that in forefront.
Yeah, Delegate Hardy has been working on that very hard.
Yes.
And that's, briefly real quick on that, it was like Mr. Davis said, a third went to the farmland protection, a third comes to the county, and a third goes to the state. Delegate Hardy was successful in getting that changed to where the portion that went to the state is now coming back to the counties at 10% a year for the next 10 years to make us whole because we'll have two thirds coming to the county instead of a third. And we're just looking to try to accelerate that a little bit faster than a 10-year period. Right? This one's big to us, is the allocation of state troopers per county.
Yes, sir.
And it's basically, our, our state trooper dispatch here in Berkeley County is probably, I'd say a third of where it should be minimum, it's a third where it used to be.
Yeah, we've lost.
It doesn't count where we should be by population. And, and we, I've personally been told by the governor's office, well, we take the troopers from here and we give them to places that, that don't have it. Well, that doesn't work out, that's why people think, and why we're always saying, people saying you need more deputies. Well, we, we're staffed better now than what we've ever been, but at the same time, what, where's the 40-some troopers that we should have right now?
Why are we at a third of where we were before? We didn't go down in population.
No, no, they, they, they actually, I've been told that they actually take them and move them to other counties. And most people, and the problem.
Is that because they have no one there?
Yeah, but there's, but, and they don't give them.
They don't give them any incentive, pay incentive.
To be in Berkeley County because they have, they have three or four kinds of workload.
Right.
The cost of living appears more.
So they'd rather go to some more cheaper, do less work?
Yeah, the one tenth of the work and, and the house and the cost of living is more affordable other than the stuff that they have to ship in. So, you know, it's, it's one of the things where we, we need our troopers, you know? We, we like our troopers, we need more. All right, Mr. Davis, this is more for the regional nine.
Yes, sir, the next four are suggested legislative topics from Matthew, so I'm gonna turn it over to him and let him explain the rationale behind it.
All right, Matthew.
Yeah, the, a couple of these are just requests for studies, they're not changing any state laws. They're basically asking the lawmakers to take a deep dive on the effectiveness of certain things and opportunities for collaboration, improvement on how the structures work. The first one is the region, the Regional Planning and Development Council structure, which is, we know here as Region Nine, there's, I think, 11 regions across the state. And basically this would be just asking a very diplomatic request for the state legislature and their folks there to study that structure, how it works, whether, you know, what the functions of it are, you know, as far as whether the governing council was adequate, whether it's representative of population changes among the different jurisdictions that have representation on that board, whether, you know, growth counties or growing communities should have more representation on that board as far as the structure of how it's governed, also looking at the function and what they do, what the councils do, the region, these developing councils, what they do, how well they perform, you know, the services they provide.
Well, you're aware that our regional council is probably the smallest regional council in the state of West Virginia budget-wise, staff-wise, and one thing we do not want is to increase the size of the regional council, I mean, not the size, but the territory.
Right.
Berkeley, Morgan, and Jefferson are a natural.
Right.
Function, and we don't want to include Hampshire, Hardy, Mineral, you know, there's Region Eight.
Right.
Which is what that is.
This would be merely a study and an assessment of what the function is current, you know, what's been going on, what the, what the service provided, the outcomes, you know, how it's been working for these different regions across the state, just to kind of take a look at.
Yeah, regionalization was thought of several years ago, and combining Region Nine to Region Eight.
Right, and whether there's opportunities for improvement, whether there's opportunities for funding structured and how the funding's handled with, with these, with these councils. Because, you know, I'm somewhat familiar with some of the challenges that have been faced with Berkeley County here with Region Nine, not saying they haven't been worked through or, you know, things are, efforts are continuing to move forward, but there's always room for improvement, and I just, this is merely a request to ask the lawmakers to take a look at the structure. It's just an idea, it was just a suggestion that came to my mind, and I thought I'd pitch it to you all and kind of say yay or nay if you're interested in it or not.
Know that the restructuring of the funding needs to happen.
Right, maybe there's some obvious ones that, from our point of view, that we would like to see changed. My understanding is that this council structure has been in place for obviously many years and could, and could obviously be looked at, so I don't think it has been. My understanding, I've never heard or seen anything about this other than we've been having Region Nine here for many years, but I don't know if there's been any audit of what they do with these councils across the state, so that was that.
Okay, all right, questions, Scotty, well, and the next one?
The next one is a kind of a product of the commemoration, actually, and the commemoration's pretty much wrapping up, but this really brought kind of a request to ask the lawmakers to look at heritage tourism. Curator Randall Reed Smith really is kind of responsible for prompting this idea in my mind in the sense of pointing out that we have over 200 historic sites in the region, the three counties here, and that's, you know, obviously a lot of George Washington heritage and all that. And you go on the Division, the Department of Tourism website currently, and I'm not, and I love the Commissioner dearly, she's a friend of mine, but there's not a big play on heritage tourism on the tourism website, you know? But yet we have a lot of tourism here related to heritage tourism. So this is just to ask the lawmakers to take a look at heritage tourism. It also came from a suggestion, a really good guy over in Herpris Ferry, I can't remember his first name, but Fry, Mr. Fry over there suggested to take a look at what Maryland does. And they have created a structure that is regionalizing heritage tourism in Maryland, and they've created heritage areas that delve into heritage tourism, like, and have designated names for the heritage areas across Maryland. So it's a really, it's a, it's a structure that creates collabora, encourages collaboration and work among all the different groups and the communities. So this is just asking the lawmakers to take a look at that and study that and whether there's opportunities where at the state level to encourage collaboration and support, obviously, for regional museums and other projects that we obviously have taken on here. So that is that, if there's any questions about that, I think that's pretty straightforward. And again, that's just a request for a study, that's not asking them to change any law.
And Matt, on these four items, when we get to the legislative summit, we'll ask you to elaborate on that too.
Sure, the third item is, is just kind of somewhat of an update, just to let you know. I talked to Senator Blair, and he is actually drafting, having someone draft legislation to, I guess, again, revisit the DMV law that allows for custom license plates. I suggested him to, to see if we could put a courthouse license plate program in and offer it to all 55 counties, all 55 counties have a courthouse. You could have a license plate with a courthouse, historic courthouse of Berkeley County on our license plate, and, and people would, and every county in the state could have a courthouse license plate with their historic courthouse on the license plate. It was just an idea on how to set up a structure where we could get maybe some proceeds coming back from the DMV to Berkeley County for our sales.
Do we currently have any nonprofit organizations trying to design any plates?
No.
Okay.
But that, that, I also presented the limitations about how that really constrained and limited, prevented the Chamber of Commerce and other organizations from, so he's also aware of that limitation that really narrowed down the possible partners for the nonprofit program that is in place. So I, you know, presented this idea to him, and he said his staff, he was gonna have them draft a bill, so. He's gonna revisit that and we'll see what I guess.
This idea was the 250th celebration, right?
What's that?
For our county, one of our plates could be the 250th.
That's true, I was trying to, as far as execution, I, I was kind of thinking about the long term and you start a program and you depend on an organization to run that program and keep it running and, running it in an upstanding manner and professional manner perpetually, right? Forever and ever, and so one of the thoughts that crossed my mind was, you know, you, you create a partnership here in Berkeley County, and then you're replicating possibly as many as 54 others in every county, so then the state's obligated to kind of manage all these relationships. So rather than go that route, that's why I came up with that courthouse idea, letting the state kind of gather images of all 55 courthouses and do an statewide program under the DMV, and then they can manage it. It was just a thought about how the state runs and how limitations are what they are as far as management.
Right, all right, so the restructure of the Berkeley County Roundhouse Authority?
Yes, I did speak with the mayor just late last night, we can remove that. He's amenable and interested, but not at this time, so we can remove that one at this time. He's appointing two additional members, he at least hopes to, the council hopes, he's gonna ask the council to approve those appointments this month, and he wants to wait and see how that works with the three appointments that he's made before moving forward and taking more of a leadership role. The idea here, though, is to continue to allow and encourage the county to make appointments to that board, but, but let the city kind of take the lead in making a majority of the appointments. And it's just, the city's interested and has committed funds substantially recently and is well on board. The only other thing I will say is, if you have any other thoughts or ideas on other legislation, you know, I like, it's a geek thing for me, I like to talk about it, so if you have any other, you know, you want to say, hey, you have a thought, feel free to reach out and.
All right, I know you keep us posted during the session, that's for sure, we appreciate that.
Sure. No problem.
All right, thank you, Matt. All right, any other questions on the, on the summit for this afternoon?
Has anything been accomplished, finalized, or whatever on the mental health transports?
No.
Well, no, not here at the county, but last year legislatively, they were successful on reimbursement.
Legislation introduced for pilot programs, but the reimbursement, and Anthony's looking at it now, the reimbursement, I think, was predicated on using outside agencies. And not so much the reimbursement to the counties if we did it.
Yeah, well, the reimbursement would only be for the mental health.
Right.
In my discussions with DHHR, they hadn't drafted a policy on the reimbursement, but it would likely be, since they're already required now, deputies, if they want to reimburse, if you were under this pilot program, it would be, if we had set up.
If we had court martial don't instead of deputy, do we get reimbursed?
That's what they said, it's likely to happen, if not, they said they're drafting a policy.
The problem is the way, the way the bill was written, it all has to go through DHHR.
Right.
And you know what that's.
Well, you're totally reorganizing and everything else.
Pass the signature page when you get done.
Don't get me started.
Yeah.
Okay, Dave, were you getting ready to say something?
Yeah, I just have one question, and I don't know, late to the game on this here, but, you know, you guys discussed the 1%, sales tax, something that I had thought of, and it's used more so in municipalities and different areas of the country, but a food and beverage tax on restaurants and, you know, bars and such, that would still grasp money that comes from people who are going out to eat, people traveling through the area. I didn't know if that's something that we could discuss with them.
You could, we could, I mean, I'll be honest with you, the majority of our roadside trash is convenience stores and restaurants.
Yeah.
I mean, it's huge.
So, I mean, that's another way, I know in Winchester, you know, they have that on top of the sales tax, 1% sales tax. I mean, that, that's a way to make that 1%, 2%, 3%, you know? And that would bring, I think, big dollars not only to the county, but to the city as well, you know, if they were able to use it within their vicinity and.
Right, I know, I know, I grabbed something at a fast food restaurant in Winchester not too long ago, actually probably about six months ago, and the local tax was higher than the state tax.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else? All right, need a motion to go into executive session for economic development.
Yeah, economic development, possible litigation.
All right.
Two items from the table.
Yeah, any item from the public? All right, all right, need a motion?
So moved, second.
All right, we have a motion for it in a second, we are in executive session.
All right. Thank you.[352.13]
We're on.
No, take it easy.
Are they out there?
Will you give me a copy of that motion?
So is that talking right there?
Well, you were talking and he ended up.
All right. We're out of the second session. We're back in open session. Is there any action being taken out of the next session?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'd make a motion to give the President the authority to sign a seven-year pilot agreement with Project Kent. That will be an industrial facility, investing nearly 300 million in personal property and a minimum of 150 full-time employees.
All right, do we have a second? Second? I have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Just the public's information when it's announced and everybody agreed to it, no state announces.
Right. All right. So we need to recess and we'll reconvene. I want to talk at the Hilton Garden for Legislative Summit.
And cater lunch is now one thing for you.
No, we're going. We're.
We're staying. We're staying.
Staying until we get there.
I'm going to delete that last whole point regarding ground count. I'm going to amend the legislative priority. And how many copies do you have? How many? Thirty?
We're going out for a few drinks next week. Are you all?
I'm going to take that one off. I'm going to take that one off and then I'll get thirty of them.